Intelligence we can't, which.
Well, you know.
Yeah. But. The fact that they're telling you that.
They have nothing more than they don't want to.
Well, in a way that makes me feel like I've done my job.
Well, but they keep doing it, we just let them be for now.
We don't have anything to consider right now anyway, right?
So they got a meeting tonight.
Yeah.
But we'll just let them have their meeting and we'll just.
I'm, I'm concerned about us giving them extra taxes on that. I, I think, well, I mean, we're here tonight to vote for it. And I think we're setting, especially the way they are, we're setting an example or a precedent that we're going to just take our taxpayers' money and give it to them to keep them happy. And I don't have the approval yet. I mean, it's only three thousand dollars, I understand that. You know, parks.
It's what we donate to the.
We'll spend twelve thousand here on the parks and to give them three thousand dollars for nothing. Well, part of it though would be.
I'm bad. Yes.
I am.
With that.
I do think about it because I, I.
I don't know what they collected out there. A lot of people, a lot of people bring this up in, except those that dumped all that to the compost.
They're already, they are already that way.
Yeah. That was enough thirty.
And I did see that article you brought to Sarah's attention.
Thank you. We will now call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the religion which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to reluctantly approve the resignation of Officer Pittson. He has served our community with honor and distinction and it would be a loss for having, uh, resign, but I understand why, so.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At five thirty-two, we will now recess the regular city council meeting to conduct a public hearing on the annexation petition request of fifty-six eighteen Highway twenty-five northeast. Now, is there anyone in council with anything to say about it? You should have all read it.
Well, I do have a comment. I note that in our, um, I'm gonna call the wrong thing, in our ordinance to, um, an- to annex the property that we have basically made a donation to um, Gilmanton Township on, um, seven years of taxes. I know, I know that we are obligated under the, uh, state ordinance to, for, uh, to give a certain amount of taxes on that property in the future to Gilmanton. But I believe we're not obligated to do it for seven years. And I, I guess my first question is what's our obligation versus what's in this ordinance? And I would direct that to maybe Sarah Brown.
I can't speak. It's, I think it's five years or less is the obligation. I can't speak to exactly what it is. I apologize. It, I can't remember at this point. Um, the reason we did the seven years is when this was initially brought to the township, which was probably well over a year ago. It was, I think, before COVID because when this house was listed, there was a, the question on if they could annex and, and get city services. Um, that was part of the OAA agreement that we were just starting to discuss. And at the same time, the township, when we had that discussion, had asked about, well, what kind of, what would this, if this not in the OAA, what would we do for this one? And we said, we, we had offered verbally at that being that we'd consider doing the seven years just to make it consistent. So that's where that came from. It was an, it was a discussion we had with the township, um, like a year ago when we first started the discussions with the OAA. It is more than we are obligated to provide them. That is correct. Um, I, I'd have to check with the attorney on the, the exact number. I cannot remember what it is, the minimum.
It's like a percentage of two years of taxes.
Sometimes they, i- it's less than five years. I know that. Um, because sometimes they do it where they phase it in, like over seven years, they'll do like so much a percentage and phase it down. Um, the reason we did it this way in the OAA, um, which is what you're seeing there is because by doing the payment upfront, we can just pay it, be done with it, not have to make, worry about making that annual payment and making that calculation every year. So it saves on some of the administrative time.
Okay, but you don't know how much over above what we're legally obligated to do, we're.
No, I know it's less than five years. I can't say what it is. I'd have to, I'd have to come back. I, I apologize. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay, 'cause I asked you about that before and I, I still haven't gotten the answer on that.
Okay, if you did, I apologize. I didn't have that written down.
Okay. And I am opposed to donating any additional funds other than what we're legally obligated to do to Gilmanton Township on this property. I, I think that we run a pretty tight ship here and this is out of the norm for me that we're handing extra money to Gilmanton Township. So, um, I don't know how much, but I suspect that it's a thousand dollars or more. We're already giving them what they're legally entitled to and I'm opposed to committing on something outside of our agreement with them. It was heavily negotiated. I didn't particularly like the end result. And at this point, I don't see giving them extra money on a property that isn't even what we're talking about with them in this joint. Planning commission we have, this is a, a property that is right in the neighborhood. It's not rural land being taken for additional city use. So, I, that's my objection. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact figure.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak?
Yes.
For or against this matter? And at this time, you can come up to the podium, please state your name, address, and then keep it to like a minute or two.
Yep.
Of discussion.
I'm Mike Saylor, uh, the resident at fifty-six eighteen Highway twenty-five. Um, I guess if it's over a thousand dollars or, I'm, I'm not asking you guys to bend over backwards or do anything out of the norm. I mean, I know coming in, I was gonna have to pay out of pocket for this and I'm completely fine with that. I mean, I'm just, I'm new to the area. I don't know anybody here. Um, I just, uh, we just wanna get on city sewer. It benefits you guys. You guys make money off of it and it's just nice for us. My only concern is that dead spot in back where the city's stubbed into, nobody owns it. So what, I mean, I, I think Mark was there for that, but we're, we're trying to figure out that too, 'cause if nobody owns it, I mean, we're, we have to mow it or we have to upkeep it. So if you guys are, if you guys are opposed to it, I, I guess I would ask that you guys start taking care of it.
Mark?
There might be a discrepancy in the platte in the beacon. It looks like there, your platte is right and beacon is wrong, I think. We can say, Sarah?
Yeah, um, we did, we did check with that at the staff level and our attorney reviewed it as well and, and doesn't think to think, seem to think that's gonna be an issue.
Okay.
It's like you own all the way to the stub.
Okay. I was just going off our conversation.
Yep, exactly. When I, going off beacon, it shows as a no man's land.
And that's the, the picture I got from the county too, is, says that's nobody, so.
Yeah, but all the official plats say there's, that's incorrect.
Okay, so, but.
I can finish. You can finish.
Then I would just say to you, you're gonna pay the taxes. We're just deciding who's gonna receive the taxes.
Okay.
So it's, it's not gonna change your county tax.
Okay, I'm, this is all new to me.
Yeah.
I'm from a bigger city. We don't have the wells or the septic, so I, when we moved in, the realtor had told us that this was already worked out. So it was all kind of a, a curveball thrown at me after we purchased the home. So I guess I'm learning as we're going here, so.
Yeah, well, we're not asking that you pay more.
Okay.
It's just who it's going to.
Okay.
In the next seven years. To me, it's kind of a big deal for the city, but it's not gonna affect your.
Okay.
What you owe, we'll get your taxes. Don't worry. So, I hope you like our new sewer.
I do have an answer for you, Councilmember Mosakio. Uh, minimum two years you have to pay. Minimum two years, no more than seven.
So who decides that?
That's part of the negotiation. The township, if they can contest it, if they don't agree with the payment, they can contest it. And then we'd have to go through that process of the contesting it and come up with some type of consensus before the annexation can occur.
So it's minimum of two?
Maximum of seven.
And we just right off the bat told them seven?
We went off, told them seven because that was what we were planning on in the orderly annexation agreement.
Did you get your questions answered then? Okay, is there any other discussion on the board here? Okay, at five forty-one, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting. Is there a motion adopting ordinance four-five-five annexing land located in Gilmanton Township?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. At five forty-two, we will now recess the regular city council meeting to conduct a public hearing on the conditional use permit request of McDonald's located at one thirty-nine Highway twenty-three West for the addition of a second drive-through lane. Is there anyone present who wishes, wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? And you would like to say, just give your name and address for our administrator.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Tom Meyer. I'm with Landform Professional Services, uh, out of Minneapolis, Min- Minnesota. We are the consulting planners and engineers for McDonald's, uh, throughout Minnesota, uh, Wisconsin and the Dakotas. And I just wanted to say I appreciate the, uh, council's consideration on the, the CUP amendment for the second drive-through uh, at the, the McDonald's location in town here. Um, and I'm open to any questions that the council has pertaining to the, the application and our, our plans.
Does anyone have any?
Uh, the only question I had was, you know, there was some question on utilities. I talked to Mark this morning and it doesn't sound like they're gonna move anything to, uh, disrupt that.
That is correct. John Halter and I, we had gone over. Originally, I didn't see it on the one map and it's on page two or something like that.
So it seems like a great advantage of lifting restrictions, so that traffic going that way, so I have no problem. That was the only question I had.
Planning commission looked at everything. You're very easy to work with. We thank you for the.
They're on us in that paperwork and we didn't, uh, have any issues.
Any other discussion? Sarah?
Oh, I will just make a comment. I did, um, the one condition that the planning commission did impose on that or recommend on that, that is within your resolution. Um, and if you pass this tonight, um, I will work with McDonald's and the owner on making sure we get that final piece in place, um, before the issuance of a building permit. So I, I, I think it's fine to move forward with it. Um, we'll just make sure we get that cleared up administratively.
Anything else?
With that in mind, I'd make a motion.
At five forty-four, we will now reconvene the regular city council meeting. And is there a motion adopting Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash eleven amending the CUP?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move on to our open forum. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on any matters within the city, please go up to the podium, state your name and address, and keep it within a one to two minute range. We'll now move on to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, we each received a call for service support for the month of April. We continue to have higher than the years past. We've had two hundred and ninety-three calls last month. Um, and that's due to traffic and darkness being down. Um, medicals were up, harassment and animal complaints were also up, and gun permits stayed steady. Um, any questions about the stat report before I go into other items? You may notice that we didn't do any C D hours last month. That is because the state put them on pause with everything that was going on.
Anyone have any questions thus far for her?
Um, coming up this, next few months, we're doing our final touches for the bicycle safety rodeo with twenty-two nineteen at the Lion Park from ten AM to one PM now for ages ten and under. So we're looking on that this year. Excited to bring that back. And the new part-time hire Russell Lopinski, he, his first day was today. And it's got some paperwork squared away and you'll be seeing him riding along with the other officers. Our cameras are up and they are activated. Um, there may be a few tweaks we have to do to get them where we want them exactly. Staffing update, we, right now, when, once we get Mr. Lopinski up and going, we should be good. Um, I do have two other officers who are gained background by other agencies, so, so I'm watching that closely. And the ordinance update for you, um, you can see that we've had twenty-one calls for ordinance violations in the month of April. It is a little bit down, um, which is good compared to March. And to you too, be proactive as you requested on the parking enforcement ordinance. And I'm not people's fan, so I do get an air pole for sure in one week. But I'm doing what you guys requested we get done. And it's majority of people are, you know, they do comply after they get a letter or. Or I know Mr. Donald has kind of talked to an individual and now they're complying. But that is all I have and that's the end of the thing.
How are we sitting on the, uh, part-time list?
There is one individual left on the part-time.
Mr. Mayor, it might be, uh, might be wise to, uh, increase the part-time list again before we run it completely out. Sometime in the near future.
So then we would have to open up the, um, job posting again and do our interview.
Sometime in the future is something we should consider.
Yeah.
Well, when. Yeah, when she's ready for it, then we will do it.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll leave Katie in charge of that.
Yep.
Might, might as well, but.
My name is Sarah Molza, two thirty-eight Elm Drive. And I'm just curious if you guys think that as a violator of the ordinance, uh, you guys received my letter last year at the public hearing, don't you think it's kind of ridiculous to keep violating all these people? And when the cops could be just getting drugs and other violators off the street? I mean, it's, I've moved my trailer two times now and in the winter, we move it out so we can go ice fishing and have quality family time. And then boom, we get a letter that we're in violation. And I like to think that I keep my yard nice and everything. I'm not intentionally trying to make the city look trashy or anything. And no matter what, no matter where I move my pickup, whether it's on my driveway or on my grass, it's still there. But I just really think that this needs to be reconsidered because I feel like the law enforcement could be utilizing their time a lot better. That's just my two cents. That's it.
Okay.
I'm really sick of getting letters, that's all. Sorry.
Are there any other questions for Katie?
I guess I'd like to comment on that. Where is your trailer now? What is it parked on?
Well, now, I had to spend a couple hundred dollars and put a gate in to my fence that was already built and there for ten years. And then I had to move the trailer to the backyard.
What is it parked on? What surface is it parked on?
On grass, because it's in, I'm in compliance according to your guys' ordinance, that it's in the rear facing or rear end of the house. But I, I, I believe I'm in compliance, correct? Yeah. Katie, get around to make sure.
Just keep, just keep it moved.
Well, yeah, but it, like, we always move the pickup and everything.
We, we can't have all this open discussion.
Sorry. But I just.
Yeah.
You know, I utilize the driveway to play with my children in the yard, especially when they were pulled out of school. And now it's, I mean, the pickup takes up quite a bit of space, you know, and I just, it's frustrating because I really feel like with crime rates going up in part, it could just really be more useful to have patrol not checking where my pickup is.
Does anyone have any more questions for Katie?
Thank you.
We will move, now move on to city, city engineer, John Halter and Jared.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, for tonight, I just have a brief update on our sidewalk issue over by the police garage. I think in the council packets, Sarah had provided a, an update. We'd met with the contractors here maybe two, three weeks ago. I mean, it's, it's clearly a freeze thaw issue. You know, you got the, kind of the poor clay, subgrade soils, as that collects water, it, you know, expands and lifts up the sidewalk, so. The solution that we've discussed with the contractor, number one is to wait and do it in the middle of the summer, trying to target the driest conditions possible. But ultimately replace the sidewalk, probably about eight to ten feet of that pavement in the very north end of the alley. Um, and then additionally, going down a little bit deeper, uh, looking at probably a five-foot subcut. And the thought there is that gets us below typical freeze thaw depths. Usually frost goes down about four feet, but knowing we're kind of in the, the shade of the building, we're looking at going down about five feet and replacing that with a, a clean sand and lowering the drain tile. So again, that work, we're targeting midsummer to complete it. Uh, the kind of arrangement we've worked out between SEH and the contractor and city staff is SEH and the contractor will cover the cost of kind of the replacement work, the removing what was built two, three years ago and replacing that. The quote-unquote additional work, that digging down a little bit deeper, um, we, we've identified as a city cost. Cause really, even if we would have done that from the onset, that, you know, that would have been a project cost, so. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have on that.
Are there any questions from any council members?
So, well, how much is the cost?
Well, in total, it's about ten thousand dollar fix is my estimate. Those are my estimates, not the contractor's numbers. Uh, you're probably interested in the city's share of that. Uh, the excavation in Backville, if the, if the contractor brings their own dirt and supplies, it's probably two to three thousand dollars. You could probably cut that number in half. I know Mark has a supply of, of material, good fill material that he could let him use. And I'm guessing then you're probably in the thousand to fifteen hundred dollar range for the city's share of this.
I thought fixing the alley was gonna solve the problem.
Well, I, I think it, it, it did and it didn't, you know, it, it solved the problem of drainage. Now we're dealing with city, you know, subgrade soils that are freeze thaw and heaving and it's frankly can be tough to control. Um, you know, we, we actually, in this original design, it included some extra provisions to deal with freeze thaw and it, it's still, you know, it's just a, it's a tough spot. You know, i- in hindsight, you know, would you have put five feet in there? And I, I'm not sure in hindsight I even would have because that's kind of, you're, you're, you might, you don't wanna err too far on the side of over-designing these things. I mean, if we put, you know, thinking of the next street project, do we wanna think about, maybe we put five feet of cut through the whole street? But I think that's probably an over-design. Um, probably would add the two and a, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars of cost per block to do that. So, you know, you can't do that everywhere. Um, so, uh, it's not terribly uncommon to deal with this in, in cities that have kind of these, you know, clay, subgrade soils, so.
So what's our share gonna be as far as cost?
Well, that was that, it, you know, if, if, in, in the market, are you probably gonna provide the soils? Or, it's two to three thousand dollars if the contractor brings their own material in and it's probably a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars if Mark has a pile that they can use for, for Backville.
We'll haul it in and, yeah, I think we did save the money.
You're okay with that?
We can haul, yeah, we can haul on a slow day.
I just don't like having to pay for the same job twice.
Wholeheartedly agree with that and I, I don't think you're doing that here. You, you know, you're, you're paying for, your cost in this is the cost of the extra work that wasn't done the first time around. You know, in hindsight, if we'd known this and just started with the five-foot subcut right away, this dirt and excavation would have been the city's cost. You know, so that, that was kind of the mindset as, as Mark and myself and the contractors tried to find a, a reasonable solution out there. Cause it's, you know, like I said, if, there's a fine line between, you know, when you're dealing with, it's one thing to design the alley to drain, we did that. Um, it's another thing to get those subgrade soils. I mean, it's also a little project where should we have hired a geotechnical engineer and done a couple of borings? But that costs four, five, six thousand dollars on a little project like that too. So we're, we're on that balancing act of trying to deal with it appropriately without over-killing it at the cost of the city and the project cost on the upfront. And so that's kind of the, that's kind of the balancing act we're, we're trying to do there. And, and like I said, in hindsight, we actually added drain tile under that sidewalk, trying to keep that soil dry, which you never have drain tile under sidewalks. That's, you know, so we were trying to think ahead, but you just, it, it's, it's hard if not possible to completely design every project and every square foot of sidewalk that isn't gonna heave when you have, you know, kind of these subgrade soil conditions, so.
Well, try it and see what happens. Come back next year if it heaves again.
I, I sure, you know, like I said, we're.
What else are you gonna do?
Exactly. I mean, honestly, we're doing our best. Five-feet subcut is crazy deep frankly.
Yeah.
But we wanna make sure we're not doing it again. Now that said, I'm gonna have. crazy deep frankly, but we want to make sure we're not doing it again. Now that said, I'm gonna have a few sleepless nights next winter, hoping the heck it doesn't free, you know, heave again. But I, I think, you know, I, I think it's a good approach as I sit here today. I'll put it that way. So. And then like I said, I, you know, maybe as we get into the next street project, you know, we can talk and maybe even include some, some alternates for extra costs for, for digging deeper so that, you know, city and city council can kind of understand those costs. But like I said, it's, you can't design everything with a five-foot subcut. It just, the money doesn't go that far on road projects. So. So anyway, I don't, I don't need any action. I just wanted to update the council and, and, you know, figure mid-July or, or so, uh, the contractors will be in there and get that taken care of.
Hold on, do you think to let my office know if that will be off?
Yeah, we'll, we'll communicate closer to it. It's probably a week and a half at the most and half of that is concrete curing time. It's probably two days of work and then figure, you know, three days, four days of concrete curing time.
Any other questions for him? Okay. We'll move on to Public Works and Fire, Mark Patton-Boos.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. A few things tonight, um, a couple of things we have down there. Pine Street parking issue. Uh, Sarah and I were approached what last, it was snow on the ground over the winter. Uh, they're getting more trucks there and also bigger trucks into the hatchery and they're having trouble with the cars parking on Pine. You know, it's not an overly wide street backing in there. They originally, um, they had pulled all their drivers, pulled them and asked what, some wanted everything yellow. But we kind of worked out between myself and, uh, testing the manager is can we paint yellow, it's red on here because it shows up by each driveway. Like, we had to do this on their other driveway eight years ago or whatever, Jim was here yet when we did it. So I mean, you got the map there in front of you. You have a, you know, they, there still is parking available for everywhere. The scout house still has parking, the apartment still have parking. Are we good with, do we need any action or just more of an informational? Does anyone have a concern with us doing this, I guess?
How many cars typically park on that street?
Um, in that fifty-feet, four-inch spot, every day. A pick, a big pickup and a trailer is out there when the parking ordinance goes off. And if you aren't there, you plow around it all winter. It's not there overnight. So it's obvious, you know, but yeah, and there's, it's mainly right there. And then when something is going on at the scout house, they totally burying that other one so narrow.
So the hundred and fifteen feet, that's nothing?
Hundred and fifteen feet's the total. So we're gonna block off thirty feet of it. So, you know, you're gonna have, uh, eighty-five. So we're gonna have eighty-five left there to take away the setbacks, you know. So, sorry about that, yeah. Same on the other side. You got a hundred and thirty-five total. We're gonna be, take like thirty feet off one side and twenty feet off the other. So, you know, you're gonna have better, another eighty-five left there too. So there's definitely gonna be parking spots there yet. And we'll just do it as part of our yearly yellow painting.
We, we just wanted to make sure that the council was aware if there were concerns. Um, we will also contact the, um, owners of the apartments um, prior to doing so, so that that can be communicated with the residents. Um, just in case you get some complaints or anything, we wanted to make sure you understood why we wanted to do this.
Good on that?
Yep.
Next thing you had here, Compost Site. Um, as we know, we had a little trouble out there. Um, I guess first of all, Katie, do you have anything you want to state about it? I know they're working, uh, PD's working. I don't want to speak on your words, but.
With the compost site, we often link her in here as the lead on this case and we do have the suspects identified. We are just working through the.
I'm not hearing you. I'm sorry.
What?
Can't hear you.
Um, he needs.
She has trouble hearing.
Yeah, I, I do.
More than that's for the compost dumping. Officer Linker's in charge of the case and, um, the two suspects have been identified and we are working on, you know, finding the details of that.
Okay. Good job.
With that, I think, you know, it's time has come. We're gonna start keeping it locked more. Um, right now, what we did just because after Monday, the guys picked up lumber, Tuesday, they picked up all the garbage. Um, we just did Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays, ten AM to six PM. Can we run with that for a while? And we made a sign up in the shop, you know, with the homemade letters or, you know.
I'm sure a lot of that stuff's getting dumped there in the dark, I would have.
Right, and that's where we'll work out how we're gonna go about getting it. You know, a lot of days, last morning I was out there at eight, had to go, I'm moving water. We just opened it then, you know, we'll try to Saturday night, it was eight o'clock probably got. So are we good with those hours where city staff can push it out and these are hours, it's every other day, gives you one day of the weekend?
So what are you looking at, Tuesday?
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, ten AM to six PM. For the spring, maybe in the summer, might go back to two days or something like that. We'll see how it goes. But at least what people can plan on then, you know, we can tell them what's going.
I'm okay with it.
That's what we'll go with for now then.
Yeah, if I can, we've been getting lots of calls on this. It's amazing how many people use this facility. So, um, I think establishing some hours and, and then we can communicate that when they call in is good. Um, I don't have anything else to add, Sarah. Most of the actually response are, are disappointment with what happened, but people have been pretty supportive of, you know, staff working with us to try to get it open and, um, you know, helping us out in any way they can. So just add that.
Is in-town resident or out-of-town people doing this? Don't really know, yeah, huh?
I would say both.
Okay.
I would say, uh, when we do find out, Chief, that we do prosecute them to the full extent of the law because this help, this hurts everybody in our community. And I think we should make an example so it doesn't happen again. That's my comment.
I put them on the cleanup and follow them over wherever they gotta take it to get rid of it.
Like I say, you guys will notice, uh, Jamie Ogg brought in that donation to help pay for some of the.
This looks like a lot. So it's more than just a trailer full.
It was a truck, dump truck, a small dump truck load, the one-ton.
Dump truck.
Yeah, the, the one-ton dump truck load packed. Then the fridge and then the TVs.
This was right after our cleanup days.
Yep.
That's why it's disgusting because we have these cleanup days for this. And that's why, in my opinion, uh, it needs to be prosecuted.
Want me to go or do you wanna, you want me to go on or?
Uh, I, just, we, just recommending Saturday and Sunday due to those people that are off on the weekend.
Okay, we, the council's gonna make this, that is gonna be the set hours. Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, noon to six. And we have to leave it at that.
Noon to six is that?
It, it's not convenient for everybody, but it's, we gotta keep, keep it at a minimum.
Hopefully it's not permanent, huh? For now, I, I'd have to go with that too.
Can I go on, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All right, um, we had an address, three oh one Murphy Street, end of Murphy Street. Um, Helen Ladd's old house, across from where Far, uh, Mayor Bettinor used to grow up. Okay, they did a sewer project last fall. They have to replace their sidewalk. Contractor contacted me actually today. We had discussed a couple of weeks ago. Can they put, we are looking at doing that road in twenty twenty-three or probably twenty twenty-four, most likely, a complete re, uh, construction. At that time, they're gonna have to tear their brand-new sidewalk back out and pay for it again. Will we allow a, and we don't want to make a habit of this, but can we, they put a, it'd be a hot mix. Um, they feel they can haul a load of hot mix, make a sidewalk out of that. It'll be hard-surfaced, you know, it's not crushed or anything. Um, is that okay with council allowing this property to do that? I don't see an issue with it. Um, I mentioned it to John, you know, I mean, knowing this street is gonna they're gonna tear the sidewalk out. There's no way it's gonna match grades in a new project. I just want it on record that we brought this up. So if somebody else comes in and says they got to, we can say, hey, this is why we're allowing you to do it. Sidewalks are cement, trails are bituminous. Good with that?
We're good with that.
Uh, I don't know what Sarah's gonna have on pool, but right now, and we have the pool coping coming up. They, as everybody else, are short of lead tech. They're running a couple of weeks behind right now. Pool, pool coping is scheduled for week of May twenty-fourth. They're hoping to get it done in about a week, which would then get us into the first of June. It's gonna be tight, but if the schedule holds, we still can do the June ninth opening. You know, that's, gives us a few days of leeway in there. Um, if we can pump it out and clean it the week before. So just so you know where we're at with pool coping is right now, week of May twenty-fourth. Summer help, I'm gonna have, uh, our, one return from last year. I'll start next week. Uh, talking to another one tomorrow. If I get, only get two or three, uh, Kenny Nato's gonna come back from last year and then I say one or two others depending on some of them have sports and stuff. They might work three, four days a week. So then we might go to three of them. If it'd be full-time, we'd probably go with two. I'll bring that and let you know next month. The only thing is Highway twenty-three ninety percent plans are all Jared worked hard and everything at the end. We have all our stuff. So there is a plan set out there. But it's six hundred and thirty-one pages and one of them is three hundred and whatever. So you're not gonna get a copy printed for you, but if there's something you want to see about that, we could maybe print, you know, someday the main pages. I don't think I have anything else. Public Works, I got one fire question. Anything Public Works?
You need questions for on Public Works?
I have a question. I, I read the shortage of chlorine for pools. Are we gonna have a problem?
We have not been told that yet.
Oh.
Our, our supplier, um, because we use liquid chlorine in the, well, we use gas chlorine in the pool, big pool, liquid on the baby pool side. And, um, when I last asked, now that was a few months ago, they were already talking this, it was not an issue, but I have not asked as of lately.
Okay, what's your fire question?
Just, um, with Fund Days coming up, are you guys good with, Fire Department always does the water bottle fight Tuesday night, you know? We were hoping to get somebody to donate the food for the participants again. So there's, you know, really no city costs, but yet we are representing the Fire Department and using fire equipment for it. Are you guys okay if we proceed with the water fight?
The people seem to like that.
Yep.
I'm not surprised.
Okay, we will do that.
Get back to normalcy.
Yeah, absolutely. So busy month. I think we had thirty-four calls last month. Um, we had six one day, five one day, ten hours of fire fighting, one afternoon and evening. So I think that's all I have. Unless somebody else has something else for me.
I got one. Are, are we doing a salt shed this year?
I hope to have discussion with Sarah once she's, yes, we have the quotes and everything in. It, it's on a state bid. That's good. So there's just been too many things with all this other stuff for us to sit down. So I kinda, I seriously would like to do it and bring it at the June meeting. And the numbers are good. I think we budgeted a hundred and the price is seventy, it's eighty thousand, but now we gotta do blacktop yet and all that and soil boring. So, I mean, I think we'll be within our price range. I hope to have that for you next month, but we just.
Any other questions? Administration, Sarah Brock.
You thought I talked a lot. I do, but, um, okay, a couple of things. Um, with the pool, um, and seasonal employees' pay rates, um, we, uh, did, um, look at that. We, we got a, quite a few comments on that. Um, we usually pay like minimum wage, uh, minimum wage for the state large employer, which is what we usually pay is like ten oh eight because it inflates every year. Um, really having a hard time competing with the other establishments in town like McDonald's. I think they're paying fourteen or something like that. So we, um, we are recommending raising that wage rate to starting at eleven, um, for our seasonal. And then what that means is then for our pool employees, like the teachers always get a dollar more. And, and the reason being because they have to spend, um, it's about a three hundred dollar class that they spend to certify themselves and, um, time to do that. So we always have paid them a dollar more an hour, um, within its fifty cents returning, um, for employees that come back multiple years. So if you have any concerns about that, let me know. Um, it was kind of a decision we had to make, um, to try to make sure we could get enough employees. Um, we had a really hard time getting enough applicants, um, to fill these positions. I, I think we're sitting okay now as of late. Um, just because the community really stepped up and trying to help us find, find, uh, students out there that would work for us. Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, um, I also put in the packet, the, the Alliance Club Fund Days liquor license. The reason I wanted you to see this is um, we had to switch them from a three-two to a full temp on sale and that's because you can't get three-two beer anymore. We're like the only state that had it. And supply, they're just not making it anymore. So working with the organization, this is what we need to do. Now, when you do a temp on sale, it has to be certified to the state. They ask for it thirty days ahead of time. We will run all the public hearing and liquor approvals next month, June first. But since Fund Days is only a couple of weeks later, I wanted to make sure I got it in front of you. If you had any concerns, I knew about that now because I want to give the states a he, the state a heads up that this is coming. Is there any concerns with them doing a full on sale? They will, they're still planning on only doing the beer, but just that it'll be the little bit stronger beer, not the three-two. Um, any concerns? Okay. Then I'll run that through for final approval next month. Um, just wanted to, to make sure there was nothing that we need to work out ahead of time.
So is it just, with that said though, I mean, are they gonna do the seltzers and the trulies and the white claws?
They could.
They could.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's more if, the way it reads now, that's what they could do.
Correct, they could, yeah. They, they did not indicate they intend to do like the, um, you know, mixed drinks or anything like that. They said they still plan to stick to the beer. Um.
So it's just gonna be keg beer?
I think we, they're doing cans.
I think they did can. They've been doing can.
Yeah.
I, I'm open to them doing anything that comes in a can. Bottles, no, but if it's White Claws, Trulies, anything that comes in a can, that, I'm good with that. Or aluminum bottle, but not glass.
No, and we wouldn't, they, they know that we, that's specific to their license too. So that's a absolutely good point. We don't want any glass.
And can we stipulate that on all beer only or whatever or?
Well, no.
This license opens it up to everything, realize that.
You, you authorize or give them the license, but it has to be certified to the state. So technically what, you can be more restrictive, but not less. You know, you still have to have the insurance and that. I think if you put that restriction on, it's not gonna be any concern. I don't think they intend to do anything other than that.
I, I would rather them do that though. That's gonna be more money. That's gonna be a benefit to them if they have some other options.
Like the seltzers and things like them. Mm-hmm. I can certainly mention to them and, and I'll talk to Ron Zummer's my contact. I'll talk to him to make sure he has no concerns with that and, and we can, if there's anything, I'll bring it back next month. But I just, like I said, it's a full on sale and that's just because of kind of what the industry is doing. Um, okay, next item, Joint Planning Board. We're meeting tonight at seven o'clock. So after this meeting, um, and we're gonna discuss just some organizational items. And there are some ordinance items that we have to talk about. Um, we do have a couple of applications in the works. Um, one is in relation to the Bed and Breakfast that operates that just outside of town on Glen Street. And then the other is, um, a potential annexation, uh, storage unit development. It's actually going to be a plat. So there'll be a, a plat that'll run through, um, a possible annexation and then development of the annexed parcel. Um, so there is some things in the works. Um, we have been getting some inquiries, um, just on things, you know, that are, that are, you know, people wanting to do things. Lots of inquiries about, um, like residential housing. People are looking for land and wanting to do that type of thing. Um, so I'll keep you updated. The meeting is posted. Um, we will continue to post them, um, just as a precaution. Um, they will only be held as needed, um, in between our meeting and the, the regular township meeting. And if you, um, are interested in getting more information on what's going on, feel free to let me know. Um, we are working on developing a webpage to put all this information on. So it's real easy for both city residents and township residents to find what's going on with the joint planning and that orderly annexation area. Um, also, we had their audit a couple of weeks ago. That went very well. Um, it, it was extremely busy and it usually is for that week. I don't know if anyone reached, I, I think some of you were contacted, which is normal. Um, we expect a report hopefully by June first. Um, I don't know if it'll be Ashley or the managing partner, John, who will be out here, but that's what we're tentatively planning on. Um, but everything seemed to go very smoothly. Um, so I don't anticipate anything, you know, crazy. At least I haven't been informed of anything crazy. It was pretty, um, straightforward. Um, but I will keep you up to date if anything changes on that. Uh, and then just as we were talking about Fund Days, that planning is continuing to move forward. Um, there already is, like, parade applications are out. I got the five K application or registration today if anybody's interested. Um, you know, and that stuff, we're planning to move ahead with all those activities, which is exciting. Um, getting a lot of feedback from the community about being excited about Fund Days, the pool and, and some of those fun things that we do in the summer. So if you have any questions for me, that's all I really have at this point.
Any questions?
Oh, I have a question. When are you opening the bathrooms in the parks?
Anytime after May fifteenth when the weather cooperates. We're talking, obviously freezing temperatures this evening. So.
Oh, playground equipment.
I haven't got a date on yet.
Okay, let us know.
My, sometime May is my, that is one I did not get a date back on.
You're, it, it will be assembled in May?
That's our hope. That's what they had originally told me last fall. I did not follow up this. That's what they had originally told me last fall. I did not follow up this spring yet.
I wish you would, um, put that on our Facebook page. Kids like to come and watch you do it.
Yeah, as long as they stay away.
Well, they, they should, they should.
Less people around, the better it is.
Well, they gotta let them have a little fun. We'll happily put the completed though on there. I think we did that last time. Okay, okay.
Are we renting shelters now?
Yes.
Yeah, first one is the twenty-first, whatever the Saturday is, twenty-first of May is our first rental and I think there's a fairly healthy schedule this year.
They're closed otherwise, other than to-
See how we can do with cameras.
Okay, we'll move on to old business, update on the wastewater fiber project.
I'll take that one. Um, I sent an email out to you, uh, informing you of the State Historical Preservation Office inquiry we got. Um, and then there was a archaeological dig that happened last week, um, on the Forest Main Route. Was there four areas, three or four?
Four.
Four areas. They did not find anything, so that's good news. Um, the report, um, has been submitted to this, the S ship or, uh, State Historical Preservation Office. And we expect a final or, uh, final determination from them. It'll go through them in thirty days and then it'll go to the MPCA. I think there's a public comment period, but they didn't find anything. So we're anticipating it should move along quickly through the process. Um, this was a requirement we had to do in order to get, um, our state funding, so our bonding money, um, we have to go through this process. So that's why I sent you the email. We, um, authorize them to move ahead as quickly as possible so we can maintain our timeline. So, any questions on that piece? Well, is the cost within our budget? It's an additional, um, up to ten thousand dollars like the email stated. Um, I don't have the final numbers, but, um, that's what the engineers had estimated because we had to pay for those people to come out and, and do that dig. Okay, when, when are we open for bids? Uh, the summer is the plan, later this summer, um, in- When? July, August? Do we have it?
Maybe for August sometime.
Is it August? For August, don't we?
Maybe for-
We have another meeting tomorrow with the City of Saint Cloud on it. Um, the plans are getting very close to final, but there's a lot that goes into this, so that's, that's why we have lots of meetings and plans. And, and we're, we're heading in the right direction though. We are making progress. And they, I just talked to the engineer right before our meeting tonight, and, and he doesn't have any reason to believe we won't stay on schedule. At this point. Um, and then the other item I wanna bring with the fiber, um, the county did, um, move forward with their support of the fiber project and, and monetary support. Um, if you didn't catch the article on WJON, um, quit laughing. I, I, yeah, I'm not even gonna go into that. I'll let you read it and, and you can make your own determination. But it's good news that they're on board, um, with, with running that fiber line. Um, the thing we will have to remember is even if we don't own the fiber line and the county does, that's our easement. So, I anticipate there will be some negotiations with the city on what our portion of any proceeds or, you know, the benefit of the project will be. Um, so that, that will be ongoing, but the biggest thing is we need to get it in the plans, we need to get it moving ahead. And it sounds like we have solid financial port, support to get that done, which is good. Um, I think that's all I have on that item unless you have questions.
Any questions for her? Any new business? Okay, then we have to close.
You skipped. You skipped one, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Land use plan.
Oh, update on the land use plan.
Um, we have a meeting next week on that and we will get survey results hopefully then. Um, a lot of people have been looking at our survey, so I'm really excited to see that. And, uh, that will hopefully, I'll report those back to you then the following month, um, but making progress, more, more to come.
Is that it?
That's on, that's it on land use.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Okay, we'll move on to the discussion of the purchase of that land.
So you gotta-
We gotta close. Okay, at six twenty-three, we will close regular city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night. So Jeff.
At six, at six forty-three, we- Get back to our regular city council meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I mean, cause I, I feel like I should walk-
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I'll see you guys over at the township. Can you lock up the city hall there? I've been, I'll take care of it. Okay, thank you.